All right, we can move right along to the Canterbury State Pre-Application Conference. I'd like to mention a few ground rules at a pre-application conference. This is a friendly get-together for the interested parties to compare notes and thoughts. It is, as the title says, a pre-application conference. I've received a letter from Jerry Dawson, signed co-owner and managing partner. Addressed today to myself as chairman, subject senior housing permit filing fee. Dear Chairman, on January 6, 2012, a letter of withdrawal without prejudice was filed with the Hamilton Planning Board in conjunction with our agreement to amend the 43-unit plan under consideration and review. At that time, the Planning Board unanimously voted to waive any filing fee for the submission of a new plan for senior housing at the same location by the same developer. The original plan was designed for 43 senior housing units, and the filing fee paid at that time was $9,100. The new plan is for 24 senior housing units. So, the subject to this letter is discussing the filing fee. Christine, have you got a recommendation here?
I need to have your board make a decision about that so that we can process the application. Normally, an applicant would submit the application, the paperwork, and a filing fee. And for me to accept that application, I need the fee. If you waive the fee, I can move forward. So, that's something your board has to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive the fee as consistent with our previous vote in January 6, 2012.
Is there a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That takes care of that.
Going to be a presentation of revised project?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to get a presentation?
Yeah, just Mr. Dawson or Mr. Dawson's lawyer, all right?
For the record, would you state your name? Attorney Frank Tavas, representing Jerry Dawson for Canterbury State. What we agreed to do, I know there's a time factor here, it's been a couple of years since we were before the board before, but the primary reason that the applicant withdrew, didn't come back again, was the market was terrible. And so, he and Jerry and his partner just decided, you know, we'll do nothing until the market gets better. Obviously, the market has improved, and so now they're going to go ahead with the application for 24 units versus the original 43. And the plans have been prepared. It's basically, it's pretty much the same. We don't have an easel, so, that's all right, I'm not going to go too deeply into it. But many of the issues that were raised, you know, back in the original filing, the traffic issues on Highland Street, access from Highland and from Asbury, we tried to address everything in the new plan. Basically, we're coming in with the entrance to the property is going to be off of Asbury Street. It'll be, the only use of Highland would be for emergency vehicle access. So, we're coming in off of Asbury, and then it's going to cul-de-sac. The units are going to be made up of, there'll be one quadrant, two quadruplexes, I believe, and the rest will be duplexes. The, we don't have, we haven't really come up with any real hard numbers on what these are going to sell for, but there will be three units, and so for 24, there'll be three, which will be low income.
Affordable.
I'm sorry?
Affordable.
Affordable, I'm sorry.
No, there is a difference, so...
Yeah, I know. So, three of the units will be affordable. The project will probably phase, with 24 units, I think Jerry is playing on doing probably eight units at a time, and the way the affordable units are designed, there'll probably be at least one in, well, there'll be one in each of the phases. So, they're not going to be all done at the end. And the, right now, the price range is, you know, he thinks it's, they're going to start probably around $700,000. The units are going to be around 2,000 or 2,200 square feet. They'll, each of the units will have a two-car garage. Same architect is going to be, is going to be Olson Lewis. They've done, they've done the design work for it. As you recall, the last time, we were doing a rather large building, which is going to house, I think, half the units, 28-22. But these will, aesthetically, the units are going to look something like that. And, are there any particular questions that you might have that maybe can ask before we get into the heavy-duty work on it?
Could you just show me, I don't know if I have the right version of the plans that I downloaded, but I see the two barn buildings and a stable still shown on this?
Oh, that's, everything is coming back.
Okay, everything's coming back?
Everything is coming back.
All right. So, you don't need the dual-use idea and so forth? That's off the table?
Right.
Okay. So, then the septic area will be in the original location, so the soils have been tested?
Right.
All right. I'm just trying to check that, because the one drawing I have shows combination.
Yeah, right. Not accurate.
Okay.
Let me make a statement. I see there's a question from the audience, which we will allow, but we'll allow it after the board has its comments to make.
Thank you.
So, I do recognize you, but not at this time, all right?
Is this current? Yeah, perfect. Is this proposed?
The total acreage, just, I'll just try to highlight some of the things that are in the narrative that we put together. The total acreage is 13.99, just under 14 acres. The area of the upland is 11.51 acres, and the area of wetlands is 2.48. So, the developable acreage would be 13.99 less than 2.48, which is 11.51. And that, that basically gives us, we have, going by the matrix that's in the bylaw, et cetera, we start out with 11 units, and then we're going to, we'll have the inclusionary housing, and that will give us another three units. And then we have, the open space will be even more in this plan, so that the open space here will be 8.4 acres, which is 60.08% of the total land area. And that exceeds the, exceeds the 15% required open space by 45%. But we, we didn't want to really kind of hand-pick and choose the various alternatives which are available in the bylaw, which allows you to get additional units. What we thought we would do, since we're, we're pretty close to the 24, I think we're around 18 and 19, just based on the open space, on the inclusionary housing, et cetera. So, there are a number of different routes we can go, but we thought that that would be best to discuss at open public hearing, and see what, you know, what features that the Planning Board would like to include, to kind of pick and choose. The minimum distance between, there is no, best to my knowledge, there isn't another senior housing development anywhere in the town of Hamilton. So, that's not a problem. And we have the six duplexes and three quadruplexes. That's going to be the makeup of the project. The developed, the developed area is approximately 5.59 acres, and again, as I said before, the open space is 8.4. And one of the problems we had last time, because this particular piece of property is located in the groundwater protection district, and I know there, I guess the town is planning on closing down the well, if they haven't already, the well up in that area, but we had a problem with the impervious area. And based upon the new plan, we no longer exceed the 15%. We're under 15% now, because that would have required us to go before the ZBA, et cetera. So, with the reduced size in terms of the density and the design of the project, we don't, we don't have, we don't have that problem with this particular plan. Parking is, is all addressed in the revised plan. The one question we do have with regards to traffic, we did a full-blown traffic study the last time, based on the 43 units, and based upon that traffic, that traffic study was done, we didn't have a problem. We've reduced it from 43 units down to 24. Does the Planning Board want an updated traffic study, or are you satisfied with the old one being adequate?
Jerry, remind me, because it's been two years, did that traffic study look at both Highland and Asbury?
I'm sorry?
Did the traffic study look at both Highland and Asbury?
Yes.
Okay.
It was conducted...
It closed off the Highland side anyway, and reduced the number of units.
Was it done during a school year? I can't remember.
Yes.
Okay. So, it addresses the pingsy and so forth, right?
It was a non-issue, based on the traffic study that was done with the 43 units, with the two entrances. It was a conclusion that it was a non-issue, it wouldn't increase traffic, but we reduced it, you know, based on the senior housing, where there's not as many cars.
Ed, procedurally, is that a piece of the application that your board will accept if so, I would find that traffic analysis in the files and send it to Jeffrey, he never received it, he was not a member of your board four years ago? So, if, is your...
If you can, I'm sure our engineer probably has an original.
Is that acceptable?
Well, let's make a motion to accept the old traffic.
I'm not sure we need to do that, because we're not in a formal hearing.
No, this is a, this is just a...
This is just a full discussion.
He's just presenting what's there.
You want to...
For me, to know that you're accepting the application materials, we're going through tonight to see what's missing, what you need. You guys are going to decide whether you need a peer review by an engineer tonight, so that when you open your public hearing, you'll have had all the paperwork that you need to make, begin to make decisions. And if the traffic is one piece of that, if you can accept the old study, then I will add that to your documents.
Well, I'd like to see it, obviously. I mean, I'm assuming it's not an issue based on what you said, but I should take a look.
Well, you know, we're, we can accept it, but it doesn't mean that we, that we don't have the option of looking at it and saying, well, gee, there was something that we thought shouldn't have been addressed based on this new plan.
It's still legal.
So, as long as that does not preclude review and comment and potential amendment. I have no belief that it will, but I'd like to leave that option open. So, with that in mind, any motion?
With that in mind, the discussion on the subject, there's a question from the audience or a statement from the audience.
Can we read this until the end? The question's until the end, so we're not...
Well, you, it's very specific to that subject, traffic. We're acting for consensus of the board.
Understood, but this is not a public hearing in the sense that we have a public hearing for comment on this. Understand, the public has a great deal of interest and want to comment on this, but I'd like to keep this to the board asking for its specific needs and requirements and questions, rather than getting into elongated discussion on each issue that may come up.
I will make sure that it's not elongated.
Just a quick question.
Okay.
Because I'm going to take mine, I promise. My name is Tim Jaskiel, I'm Sharon Road. It was interesting to note from the prior business dealing with the Asbury Street property that you spoke about earlier, that it states that the, it's subject to the groundwater protection overlay district. And my understanding is that the entire parcel that we're talking about now, the entire parcel, is also subject to the protections of the groundwater protection overlay district. And my understanding of those protections are that only one unit per 80,000 square feet is allowed in that area. So, I'm trying to reconcile how we're able to put 24 units on 11 buildable acres with that zoning protection on that land. That's my question.
All right, that's, that wandered off the traffic study discussion.
This is exactly, that's a legitimate question, and that's something we had a mention, as you know, well know, a long and involved discussion about, which is great to come back and discuss again, but that's after the application has been accepted and we have that discussion, because right now, we're really doing a pre-application, what we're trying to find out, are there any key problems with what's been submitted in front of us that we see immediately? That issue will come up, but that's not...
I only mentioned it because it might make these other issues move legally.
Understood, but just as you, as you know, we had a long and involved discussion about it, and we involved our legal counsel, who made a recommendation to the board as to its authority and what could or could not happen there. So, again, that will come up, I'm sure, but that's not an issue that the board, I believe the board wants to get into, because it will consume probably a whole evening.
There's another question from board member.
I would just like to suggest, I'd like to have Mr. Juarez finish this presentation and then have a discussion. Because he's halfway through, and almost, and I'd like to hear what he has to say about all these things, and then discuss the things.
We'll come back to it.
Okay. All right. And also, the, this is, this would be considered, we meet the requirements of this being a low-impact development. And again, these are, a lot of these things are engineering issues, which we get into in depth during the actual, you know, review of the plan. We're incorporating the same water conservation measures that were originally proposed on the original plan, and the same thing with the wastewater, that hasn't changed. The buffer areas are going to be increased, because we have less area that we're developing. Right now, I'm sure you've probably been through there, we're not, we're not, we're not cutting trees, we're not, you know, really, we're going to make it a much better project. I mean, right now, it's dirt-turnoff paddocks, there's no grass, and we've got a substantial plan on vegetating the entire project, that'll be taken care of. The fiscal benefits are, you know, there's no need for me to go into it in great detail. You can just, everyone will have a copy of this, it'll show you how we calculated the various things with the excise taxes on cars, and the permitting fees for the building permits, for electrical inspections, et cetera. And the other things are really kind of, will come towards the end, the signage for the property, which would more than likely be over on the Asbury Street, would be where the entrance would be, where the entrance sign would be. That would be something to be designed by the architect at a later date, the lighting for it, et cetera. We don't have, we're not looking for any exemptions. Lighting is, as per the plans, again, just indicating where the lighting will be, but the actual design of the fixtures would be something that would be brought up for the public hearing process. You know, again, the site, the site access, that's part of the traffic study. We also have filed, obviously, we filed a stormwater management plan, which will be another item that's going to have to be completely reviewed. Parking is...
Is that a new plan?
I'm sorry?
Is that a new plan?
Which one?
The stormwater management?
Um, it's not...
The road is somewhat similar, but the question is, have you got the...
Yeah, we've prepared a totally new stormwater management plan.
All right.
And landscaping, again, there's a, one of the pages in the, in the plan shows exactly what type of landscaping. And again, a lot of what we've done on these plans was based upon the input that we received. We spent two years, we kind of beat the whole thing to death. We're not trying to reinvent anything, we're just trying to incorporate all of the positive aspects that the Planning Board and the public, the public during the public hearing process have recommended. That's all I can say.
Can I ask you a question? This says 44 units on page four.
Chloe, could you speak up some for us?
It says 44 units, so that's a typo, isn't it?
That's a typo. Good catch.
Well, does the math work then on this?
Yes, yeah. That was just, this was, we did a similar narrative first overall, so we used that as a skeleton to prepare this one. And again, that was, I tried to go through it fairly thoroughly, but we did, speaking with the team, she wanted us to actually, to modify the original one and kind of expand it, which we did, because we were taking both the rules and regulations and the bylaw, and applying both and trying to address as many, many aspects of this we could.
But I mean, this, you had 44 units at 2,000 square feet.
The calculations that I did were based on 24.
Because then it says it equals 88,000, but 24 units times 2,000, isn't, is that, is that 88,000 square feet? I don't think so.
No. Actually, this part of it was done by the, I have to defer to the engineer, because he did, he did some of these things, and we didn't bring it in tonight. But we'll make a note of it, and we'll clarify it the next week.
Yeah, it's 48,000. And so, I'm just wondering if the whole math all the way down is...
No, I, I double-checked the math a couple of times, and I, I have a whole separate set of numbers that were done without having, without using this, we've done calculations with totally separate ones.
Right, so I'm saying, if you continue down this paragraph, $100 a square foot, it wouldn't be $9 million.
We'll, we'll double-check later, before we can back in.
Jerry, a question, and I know we'll get into this in more detail, but the wastewater treatment, is that going to be a package of the plant?
I believe it, I believe it was. I think that was the original proposal.
If I remember correctly, this is Tom, and I know we'll get into much more detail later on, that it was...
It's shown in the large plans there where it's located?
No, I saw, I saw where it's located, I'm more interested in terms of, is it paralleling the same treatment process that was, we discussed last time?
I think so. I mean, I think, we had preliminary discussion with Board of Health, the staff, the building Board of Health and Conservation, to kind of take a quick look at it. So, I don't, they didn't really, like I said, delve into the details yet.
That, I just, that was a general information question.
I have a question about the emergency access. Are you using cross-street to come down, and do you, will you have legal rights of way across those lands?
Yes.
Because that was something that was a loose question at the end, some people thought you did, some people thought you didn't, that they could stop the development and so forth.
Development had, the development has easement rights to that as well.
We had the title, we had the title, we did a specific title search at the registry, and we do have, we have the legal rights to that access for emergency vehicles.
I think the board might benefit from a letter from the fire chief saying that there is a second emergency access?
Yep.
And that he's reviewed it and so on.
And the same probably from, just to cover all the bases, is I don't know if you've talked to the police chief, just to review the traffic?
Neither, neither of those two were at the meeting that we, that we held about a week and a half ago.
Okay.
But we'll make sure that we...
I think it's just...
I think, as a department head, they all received the packet, once it's complete.
Yep.
So, that's the next step.
We'd just like to get that comment on the record at some future point.
Yep.
What do you...
I was wondering whether, just as part of the application, that there could be some sort of a letter from the abutters that said, who have access to that road, so that that's clear?
Yes.
That there was that question of that road and the ownership and the right and easement on that road.
They provide the documentation.
We'll provide the deed with the easement.
And then my other question was, did you do a, have you, have you done a market study on, on the needs for the senior housing?
Yeah, for Dr. Jerry.
And the other question was, before considering this application, did you go to the ZBA to withdraw the, the commercial license?
No.
So, so that has to be done before we would review the application, isn't that correct?
Not, not review, but take a final voting.
Is that correct?
You can review this as a site, you know, as a special permit, and once you approve this as a special permit, the other one is, is no longer void. I mean, it's no longer useful, he can go back to the ZBA after.
But I mean, wasn't that a condition of the, original condition in 1986?
We've had, you've had a variety of procedural decisions back and forth from this board, zoning board, and your town council about what comes first in this process.
86, 88, 94.
I'm just looking at the conditions.
If he, if he doesn't get, if he doesn't clear this special permit, and he had already taken away the other one, then he'd be left with no permitted use. So, seeking your special permit, he has two years to take action on that, and in that time, he can then withdraw the existing special permit. If you were to deny this, then, and he had already withdrawn the ZBA special permit, he would be left with no permitted use, as I mean.
So, what we would do then, I'm just looking at the conditions of this thing, that said that there's no further subdivision. So, we would not approve this application until, or the condition of the approval would be that that was withdrawn. You could ask for that?
It would just simply make it out of the law.
Making this loss. Well, I still think it's something to discuss. No additional building for housing, this condition from 1986.
Right. So, we finish the process with you, then we go to ZBA and withdraw?
Because I thought you went to them in the fall, actually.
We never went to...
No, that was on a different issue.
Oh, it was advertised.
Is there further questions from the board? Christine, you've got a comment?
No, just on my, my list tonight, have you discussed and advised staff whether or not you want a peer engineering review? If so, I need to...
Whether you want to what on...
An engineer to review your, the engineering document, stormwater management plan.
Mr. Public.
Do you need a, do you need a motion?
I do, because it's going to cost your applicant money to hire an engineer, so...
Could we ask that the same engineer?
I recommend, yeah.
If it's all right with you, I think we ought to have the same engineer, because
he'll be up on the learning curve.
You see the person?
I know it, but that's, I'd rather do it in a friendly way.
You did that in the motion, Christine, yes. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we use the same engineer to...
Conduct a care review.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
He's a busy man, so book him as soon as you can.
And one last comment on the application. I have received a few additional documents, condo documents today, that I will send to you electronically. The other piece, there's one small piece missing in the application process for senior housing, they have... housing, they have to designate a certain amount of open space on the project. Your bylaw speaks to whether or not they're asked to put that in a conservation restriction or another legal arrangement for that open space. I would ask your board to revisit the bylaw and see if you have a preference for how you would like that to be arranged, that has not been submitted to date. They have not proposed an arrangement, legally.
We just felt it was something that the, would be a better decision made by the planning board as to those who are telling you what we wanna do.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, it doesn't make any difference to us.
Any suggestions?
We don't have to do it tonight, just saying that.
No.
But I have a follow-up question on the increased density on this part of the property, and I'm not sure that's an eyeball quick thinking that things were spaced a little bit more, so the re-injection...
No, it was, it's actually decreased still.
I know the overall density is...
But that half of the property is actually still decreased.
Okay, with the two quadruplexes here and then this bundle here around the turnaround, I didn't know, and so my question will be, when you deal with the groundwater re-injection, just show what, where the points of re-injection are and so forth, so that we can draw that to Mr. Puff's review? At one point, they said that this area was all till and was very hard to inject, and that's my recollection, but it'll be in the records that you have.
Any other questions from the board?
In terms of the Long River West, Christine, are there any other things that...
No, the last thing Frank and I spoke about was trying to plan out strategically how we move through the public hearing process.
Yeah.
And he and I have both kind of agreed that it would be best to do one or two topics a night for a couple of meetings so that you can get through a particular topic, if he has his engineer here, focus on the engineering, and pick, you know, landscaping and some other, you know, architectural amenities another night. So he's gonna work on a schedule that works best for him and his consultants and engineers, and we'll propose that to your board, if that works.
I think that makes a great deal of sense, so we're not circling back on issues over and over again. What would be helpful, if you could, is to sort of map that out, you know, is what you think those topics will be, so we all know what the schedule looks like, and we can work within that schedule.
Does it make any sense to find out if any board members have scheduled trips out of town or something? Have we solved the problem of continuity that we can review tapes?
Yes, we're recording.
We will be able to do that, so if someone does have a business trip and they have to leave town, then they can deal with that.
They can miss one meeting.
Yes, one meeting, and you can listen to the recording and you're clear, mull and roll.
I just wanted to surface that issue.
I believe that the audience has interest in what's going on because they're here. Would you like to rephrase your statement of earlier?
Unless, unless somebody didn't understand that...
Well, before, the subject of traffic was being discussed, and so you were kind of, you were kind of not in the traffic mode, you were making statements.
I'm in the groundwater protection overlay district.
Can you please state your names?
Timothy Majowski, Sharon Road.
Thank you.
That's my concern. According to the town zoning, more than one unit per eighty thousand square feet is not permitted on this property. And with plans for this amount of units, I believe the bylaws are on town coordinates.
That's so noted, and there's another question in the back row.
Yeah, my name is Richard Hayes, I'm an abutter, those people know me. We're sitting out here, we have no idea what this plan is, all we've heard is words. So it is very hard for me to make any, raise any questions and so forth tonight, and I wanna be sure that we get heard and our concerns, and you've done a fine job over the months and years that we have been working on this. I'm glad to see you're back with another plan, but I have no idea until, when can we get...
I think that we need to make...
It's been submitted to the board now, right?
Yes, as a member of...
I can give you a private set if you want.
As a member of the public, you are allowed to come to town hall any day and review all of the plans and documents in the planning department upstairs. There's always a full set available for the public to review. It's a lot of information to send electronically, but if you come in and request that, I can send that to you as well.
Right, I think the point is, this is just the beginning.
This is a pre-application.
Yeah, and I'm unfamiliar with it.
No, no, I'm just explaining to you, it's a pre-application where we just have an informal discussion, we look at it, we raise any concerns or issues we have, so that when he comes with a formal application and we begin the public hearing process, that we're all on the same page. So there's no surprises like, oh, well, your plan is a failure because it doesn't meet these key issues, so we wanna get that done so that we can actually move through it.
I was unaware that I could go in and do that, so I've learned something that I can...
So you or anyone can come to the planning office, Christine's a very nice person, and she's very accommodating and very patient. She puts up with me. There's another question.
Well, no, I was simply wondering if there's any pre-app plan in digitized format that could simply be emailed out to anybody who requests it.
It's a lot of material. I will see if I can condense some things for you. It's a lot of, it's a lot of material, it jammed up a few of their computers, so see if you can't get a bridge person.
Why not come out, come in and ask for the ones you want, John?
Well, no, I'm saying for the abutters, if, I, my suspicion is at least for the general one-page plan, there is already a digitized format plan that's...
For one page, of course, but, I mean, what I've received is something like twenty-five pages so far.
Well, sure, I understand that...
And the half of them were withdrawn and then some changes made, so when we get the whole package together, she said you can request it. I look, so...
I have one question.
Has the wetland boundary in any way changed?
No.
I didn't know whether with further excavation, test pits, and messing around with horses and stuff over the last two years. So that...
Matter of fact, I've even closed off a lot of the paddocks and stuff like that. It's been less use.
I don't know whether it's necessary to ask Mr. Henkin whether...
He's got a, he's got a full set of the plans.
Well, just to reconfirm, the edge of the wets are unchanged.
He will provide a written review for your board when the public hearing begins.
Okay.
I'm gonna entertain one more question from the audience, and then we're gonna close this friendly discussion and get on to the selectman who's been patient, who are waiting patiently in the back desk. Go ahead.
So Kami Backman, abutter, three seventy Highland. I'm just quoting in the paper, the Boston Globe article, August twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, that Jerry Dawson had spent two hundred thousand dollars pursuing the previous plans and had withdrawn them when even twenty-nine units were too many for the abutters. And what I would like to just put out there is that we don't want to waste time or money if there is going to be a big hurdle. I would prefer that we try...
If this were to be a big what?
Hurdle against the GPOD.
Can I ask a question? Because I, I heard about this same story, I've never spoken to anyone from the Boston Globe, I don't know who told them that, yeah, but I've never spoken to them.
Well, I guess you could contact David Radgar.
Supposedly, someone contacted me and asked me these questions, which I've never spoken to anyone. So I was told, actually Frank said, hey, there's a story about it, and that was all just to me.
I was there, I was there the, when the, the day that we have, we sold our house in Hamilton a while back, but we bought our horses at Canterbury now until we start construction of a new house. And so we were there when the Boston Globe reporter came over and introduced himself, and he says, does anybody know Jerry Dawson? And of course, I said, I do, and I told him that I represented him. He wanted a lot of information, and I said, that would have to come from Mr. Dawson. And I told Jerry that the Globe reporter had been there and gave him his number if he wanted to call him, and I don't believe that Jerry ever called him.
I haven't called him.
So I'm not sure where we got the interruption.
Whether that is, whether that occurred, whether that occurred or not.
It's irrelevant.
This is not, this is, if you have a point to make, make it, it's, this is like...
The point was, and I was making it...
Which is?
That if we are going to run into hurdles, let's bring them out in the beginning, so that he does not waste money or time, and neither do any of the other, other...
That's why we're here.
Concerns.
We appreciate it, absolutely agree.
That's why we're here.
Yes, so that was my point.
I wanna hold you to one minute, so go ahead.
I would just, I would just say to the applicant in, to follow up on that, that I think that the overlay district is gonna be a problem in this application.
Very much so.
I declare this friendly discussion ended for the night.